Call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge led by Mr. Grant Kelly. As we have our moment of silence tonight, I want you to ask you to remember the Ward family. We lost one of our own yesterday, Eddie Ward, so please remember them during the moment of silence. Thank you. Approve the agenda. Anybody have any questions?
No, maybe.
One second.
Sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve the consent agenda. We discussed this at length Tuesday night. Anybody has any other questions?
Move to prayer.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Number six. Hey, number six, we're pleased to have the director of the Murfreesboro City Schools, Dr. Linda Gilbert with us tonight, and she had a few words she wants to say. Dr. Gilbert, welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you having me here. I'm here to thank you for the partnership that we are forming with Murfreesboro City Schools and Rutherford County Schools. Particularly, I'm here tonight to thank you for the partnership that we've been able to form with adult education and that we will be really forming in the fall with English language classes for our adults. So I'd like at this time to introduce Kathy Farrell. She really is the one that has kind of powered the program at Franklin Heights and also Patterson Park, and let her tell you a little bit about that program. And again, our appreciation to you and to Mr. Joe Herbert.
Thank you all, and we will be very brief, but just want to echo what Dr. Gilbert said. Really want you all to understand how much we appreciate that partnership and the impact that it has on our children and your children that you serve as well. The GED program has been amazing, and they're serving in two locations, at Patterson Park and Franklin Heights. Eight people generally at Franklin Heights and about 12 to 15 at Patterson Park. Four people have received their GED, and those are classes that I taught once upon a time in the Rutherford County school system, and I taught that same level. Those are the very basic entry level pre-GED classes, and to have anybody get their GED from that level is very remarkable, and we have four. And I don't know if you, I hope that you've been to a graduation for adult ed, and to watch the children videotape their parents or grandparents in a cap and gown walking across the stage is a pretty powerful thing, and I think it sets the tone for that child and the way that they'll value education and the type of citizen that they'll be in the future. So we are so grateful for that. I think that you all are the cornerstone for the 15 nonprofits and government agencies that partner over there and the multiple services that folks receive, particularly at Franklin Heights. But I think none of that really brings value to that community without the GED piece, without the adult ed, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or anything you want to say? Mr. Blair?
I think we're all pleased to have the opportunity to partner with our sister system. I think we've all looked for that over the years and thank you to Mr. Gill and to Dr. Gilbert for making this come about. So I think we've always wanted to have a strong, solid relationship, and this certainly seems to be the building blocks that that's happening, so good foundation.
Okay, number seven.
Seven, we have a spotlight tonight. I guess it was maybe a couple more meetings or so ago, Mr. Doris Jernigan inquired about gang activity, gang awareness, and what we've done to train and recognize those kinds of issues, and thought we might as well go directly to the source. Major Bill Kennedy and Captain Barry Hendrickson are here. Bill heads up the SRO Division, and I guess Barry is kind of his right-hand man, so to speak, so Major Kennedy and Captain Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mrs. Gill. Mrs. Barnes asked us to come and speak about gangs, and what I want to do is just give you an overview of what we do with the schools, inside the school system, then I brought my expert, Captain Hendrickson, who's going to talk about our collaboration with our local agencies and what we're doing outside of the school system to better get information and knowledge to our principals and administration, teachers, so that they're better aware of it. Of course, in 1993, when we first got into the school system, there was gangs then, just as there are gangs now, and our approach now is no different than it was then. And of course, when Sheriff Truman Jones and the school system collaborated in putting SROs in the schools, they had a principle or philosophy that is as good than it is today. And the first approach is a holistic approach, all the way from the time a kid comes into our school system in kindergarten, all the way through to the, till they graduate into the 12th grade, is that we're going to bombard them with information to become good as citizens. Very proud to announce that our SROs teach over 13,000 classes each year over our 43 schools. With that, we have over 29,000 advisory sessions with young people, and part of that advisory sessions is when Captain Hendrickson and our SROs go out and teach our teachers and our faculty members what to look for in identifying people who may be gang-related. We're able to pull those young people in and discuss with them and find information and find intelligence in reference to gangs, which we were able to give that on to local agencies and pass that on to school administrators as to what we're doing and what we're dealing with inside our school facilities. Communication is the key in the way we hit this. We hit this hard. Once we identify somebody who is an alleged gang member or somebody we think is a gang member, the first call we make is to that parent, and we make sure that parent understands and knows the severity of the situation and that we ask for their help. We ask for partnership and we ask for communications between them and us. We also deal with this through after-school activities. Your SROs have 50 different programs in which we sponsor through the school system, one of which you approved and allowed us to have after-school activities like keeping kids safe. We have wrestling programs, archery programs, fencing programs, trap shooting programs, where we try to pull those young people in a different direction after school. We never do want to glamorize and to promote or glorify gangs, so we're not going to sit up here and, you know, over-exaggerate to you any kind of problems or situations, but we will answer any questions that you might have about the problem at hand. One of the biggest problems we do have with gang members and with the gang community in Rutherford County is extracurricular activities. We do have a great handle of it on it inside those school building, but when it gets after hours and at gang games, football games, basketball games and such, such large crowds, we have a hard time making sure that that's safe and secure unless we have enough manpower. And working with Mr. Gill and the principals, we did figure out a minimum staffing requirement for future gangs, games throughout the year. So what I'm going to do is turn this over to Captain Hendrickson, and he's going to tell you what we're doing with collaborating with local agencies.
Appreciate it. One of the things that we started doing again with local agencies, we have set up, when we first started doing it, we were doing it every month. We were having a meeting with every law enforcement agency in Rutherford County, Laverne, Smyrna, Murfreesboro City, and Sheriff's Department, as well as MTSU. Just with the demanding schedule that we all had, it was really hard to meet every Wednesday, every third Wednesday of every month, so that kind of fell to the wayside a little bit, but just too recently, we have reinstated this meeting. We had a meeting about two weeks ago, had a real good turnout, and we have developed, for lack of a better word, an information sharing hotline, so to speak. It's within every agency in the county, and it's a, basically what I just said, it's an information sharing. If something's happening in Laverne, nine times out of 10, it's going to come down to Murfreesboro or vice versa. If we're seeing something in Murfreesboro that's going towards Laverne, we can cut that off and let them know what's coming, especially if a student transfers to another school that we know is involved in that type of activity. We can let that other SRO as well as the principal know basically what's coming to them. We also have been teaching at MTSU twice a year, spring and fall semester, for the past four or five years now to the upcoming teachers, most of them that are in this county, but throughout the state of Tennessee. Whoever goes to MTSU and does student teaching in this county gets a four-hour gang presentation of what to look for. Now, rest assured, we let them know that we're not living in Los Angeles, however, it's going to get like that if we continue not to do anything about it. There are provisions within the handbook of the Rutherford County School System that states that if we can prove that a child is involved in this type of activity, the school has a right to discipline that child. Well, it's my job to educate the SROs what to look for, and it's not your stereotypical gang member that everybody thinks. When I teach my class, 10 years ago, if I would have said picture a gang member in your mind, the average, or what everybody would say would be a 13 to 17-year-old black man with baggy pants on. It's not that way anymore. Gangs are diversified now, they're hiding, as opposed to wearing rags at all the time. We still have enough rags to supply every farmer in this county with something to wipe their nose on, without a doubt. That's what my grandfather used them for, and that's what I use them for, and I guarantee you, I should have brought some tonight. I could have handed them out for y'all tonight. But they're getting smarter, and when they find out what we know, then they change that, so we have a hard time keeping up with it. The best thing we can do is educate. We will teach to any school that asks us to teach, but if the principal doesn't want us down there, we don't knock down the door and try to teach to that faculty. Now, if we have an SRO in that school, you better believe they know what to look for. We have, quite honestly, you know, Major Kennedy got me up here and I used to work with Rick Wise, I don't know how to say it, but to be blunt, some people don't want to know what we know, to be honest with you, and they don't want us coming down there. That's just, that's just how it is. And like I said, I don't force myself on anybody, but if they ask me, I'll come up and show up and tell them what to look for. Problem we run into when we tell them what to look for, then they start finding it. Some people don't want that kind of information, but I'm telling y'all tonight that it's here and we're doing everything humanly possible to combat this, but we have got to have y'all's help. Y'all meeting every school in the county, every citizen in the county, it goes back to parents as well as law enforcement, that we've got to, we've got to get a handle on it. And if y'all allow me to read you something real quick, this is part of the, this is email I received about when I was talking about information sharing, and I'm not going to mention this young man's name, because he is a juvenile and he's not being charged with anything, so I'm going to try to hang on to my house and not violate anybody's civil rights. But the subject involved is an alleged member of the Great Street Crips, along with other family members, and these are the individuals that was involved with the shooting over at the MAC, Murfreesboro Athletic Club. Y'all familiar with what I'm talking about? Down in this email, or further along in this email, it says, it gives the addresses and streets where these individuals live. Also, SROs, if you could all listen for any talk of rumors among the younger gang members still in school that are with the Great Street Crips and other Crip sets, I would appreciate it. The young ones may start talking or bragging about what they've done or may be going to do in retaliation. That's what's going on, okay? It's not the fact that these kids are disrupting class and they're not getting their homework turned in. They're involved in other activities that could not only endanger other gang members, but endanger everybody sitting in this room. Six or seven years ago, Major and I were working extra duty at YMCA, had a very strong police presence over there, and a gang from Loody Street in Nashville, Lay Ocean Gang, came down and shot up the parking lot while we were there. My generation, y'all's generation, we grew up respecting not only our parents, but law enforcement, and it's not like that anymore. And anybody in a position of authority, I was taught to respect them. It's not like that anymore. The point I'm getting at is they're going to shoot up the YMCA with about 13 police cars out there, then we need to pay attention and teach everybody what to look for, so if they see trouble coming, we can do something about it before it's too late. I scared everybody to death, I hope. Anybody got any questions?
Anybody have a question?
Yes.
Are you still getting a lot of traffic out of Nashville?
Yeah, we get a lot of bleed over from Antioch, simply because if they get kicked out of Antioch, you can throw a rock and hit Laverne High School, and we get a lot of bleed over from them, as well as out of state. And it's real easy to pick those up, because if we, if we start seeing Chicago gang stuff and we just had somebody transfer in from Chicago, that's who we start looking for, so...
Well, does Metro Government work with you pretty well on these things, or, I mean, they've got bigger territory to cover, but...
Metro's kind of funny about the way they handle stuff. They will, they will, they will answer a question if they're specifically asked, but at the same time, we've invited them to come down to the meetings. I'm not saying that they're not with us, but they've not been down yet, so they do work with us, but as far as the information sharing that we're talking about in this county, we don't get any kind of information. Very seldom do we get any information from a school in another county like, or another school system like Antioch, unless the SRO calls us, and most of the time, that's where we get the information from. The SRO from another county will call us and go, "You got one coming, you might ought to look at."
Captain Henderson, you mentioned you needed our help. My question to you is, how do we help you?
I am really...
I think you've got our support, but I don't know what we need to do.
I am really good at doing what I'm told. My supervisor told me to be here tonight, and thank God, I know Murfreesboro City Police, because I broke several laws getting over here tonight. We were 49 inches deep in water at my house, so it's, it's been a long week. I don't, I wouldn't recommend that you force us on anybody, but it could be one of those things that when you're talking to these principals and these new schools, that it could be strongly suggested that you have us in to talk to them about what's at least surrounding their school. You know, it's different all over the county. There's different colors, meaning the particular gang colors that go along with Central is Laverne to Oakland, and then some of them mixing. If we're forced on people, they might have us and fulfill that requirement of having us in for 10 minutes or whatever like that, but if it's a suggestion and they want us there, they're more likely to listen to what we have to say. And to be quite honest with you, I've been asked to go to some schools and, "Can you come down and run us through the gang situation in about five or 10 minutes?" How long have I been up here? You can't do it. You just flat can't do it. You know, you give me an hour and I'll touch the surface of what's at that school, but it's going to take a while. That will be what I would suggest. You know, other than that, just you having us up here tonight and recognizing the problem is a huge step, and I appreciate you doing that, but, you know, talk to the community. We'll go to a church, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter where we're asked to go, we'll tell them. And to be quite honest with you, when we teach classes, I put a lot of it back on the parents. I really do, because they want somebody else to raise them, and if there's no punishment at the house for what they're doing, it's real hard for us to do anything with them. So, you know, I welcome the opportunity to talk at churches and community meetings and stuff like that, because that's where the parents are, and I put a lot of this back on them.
Any other question?
What percentage of the young people in what age of young people are most influenced by the gang?
We've got a huge number of children in this county that go to these county schools. Half a percent or 1% are involved in the type of activity I've been talking about, but with the number of kids that we have in this school system, that starts adding up after a while. I've had them as young as sixth grade, and we've had 21-year-old seniors at some of the schools that through whatever, whatever way they're allowed to stay in school through the educational process, we've had those older kids in school, and you mix a ninth grader with a 20-year-old senior, that's real easy for that individual to take advantage of. Rick and I worked at Stewartspur, seemed like forever, you know, he gave me a lot of trouble down there, but... But we had card-carrying members in the seventh grade of the KKK down there. When I say card-carrying member, they didn't make it in art class, it looked like a driver's license, and it had an expiration date on it, and Rick and I both had to talk to him and explain to him that he couldn't wear some of the stuff he was wearing at school, because not only was he going to get himself in trouble, we were going to have to suspend a whole lot of people if he kept doing what he was doing. So if I had to pick an age group, as young as the sixth grade, all the way up to seniors, but in the presentation that we give, we have individuals in this county as well as throughout the nation that are involved in various types of activity, doing certain dances that are associated with the gangs, and they've got two or three-year-old cousin with them in the picture, or one or two-year-old brother. Most of, not most of them, some of them had kids of their own. And I'm a member of the Church of Christ, because that's where my parents took me, the time I could walk. If that influence is in the house, that's what those younger kids are going to look up to. You know, daddy's throwing this kind of sign, or daddy wears all blue all the time, I want to do what he's doing, whether, you know, I wanted to get a job so I could have something. They see that as their influence, and the influence goes down as far as the kids that when they're learning how to walk, and if that's what they see in the house, that's what they're going to start acting like when they get to school. Not saying we've had kindergarten members, but we've had kindergartners drawing pictures of what they've seen at the house, which is a six-pointed star all in blue and stuff like that. It's pitiful, but that's the environment that they're growing up in.
What I'm hearing is you're saying to us is we have to start with these children at a very young age to teach them to be anti-gang affiliated.
That's one of the, we get asked all the time, why do we have officers in K-5 schools? Why do we have officers in K-5 schools? We get that question, especially from the county commission all the time. Sorry, Major, if I'm messing up here. We get that question from the county commission all the time. That's the exact reason right there. If we get a hold of them when they're that young, we teach K through fifth grade, as well as sixth through 12th grade, character education, and we've got a new program called It's Simple Do What's Right. There's no catchy slogan or anything with it. We just try to teach the kids, if you think it's wrong, it probably is. Do the right thing, whether it be smoking, whether it be vandalism, whether it be whatever, disrespecting their parents. If you think that that's wrong, it probably is. You need to act right, basically. So one of the worst things that could happen to this county and the SRO Division, if you pull officers out of K-5 schools, and I know I'm not talking to y'all directly, but if we lose that before we had officers in K-5 schools, Major Kennedy can tell you, he was at Oakland High School when it first started, he could tell what kids were coming from a school that had an SRO, as opposed to the kids that were coming from a school at that time that did not have an SRO. Took them a while to get them back in shape and realizing what was going on. That's one of the main things that we focus on, that's why we are in K-5 schools. Yeah, most of our focus is on teaching classes in those schools and child custody. We have parents all the time come in trying to pick kids up that they shouldn't pick them up. Law enforcement is kind of pushed to the side. We try to let those kids know that there's other ways and other means of getting money and doing things besides what they're seeing everybody else do.
I think what Officer Hendrickson and I found out when he started at Stewartspur, and of course, it didn't seem as long for me as it did for him, but anyway, is that just having a, having a SRO around that children who have been taught that the policeman is a bad guy, they find out he's really not such a bad guy, and they can go and talk to him, and they can discuss things with him, and I think that was one of the most important things. Do you have another question?
I get this feeling, Rick, that no school and no age group is isolated. Everybody, you know, every school, every age group is suspect or subject to the pressures of gangs.
Absolutely, and it's just everywhere. It's in the music that they listen to, it's in the TV shows that they're looking at, and it's on the games that they're playing. So, you know, it's, it's everywhere, and the best we can do is just give as much education out there as we can.
Mr. Blair?
Is there a partnership or collaboration program with another education system that you've seen that you believe would work for our system, that has had success somewhere else?
Are you talking about a particular, like a DARE program or a GREAT program or something like that?
Something along that line, something that's organized, that's consistent, that's not just scattered and hodgepodge, but has some consistency with it.
That's why we develop programs constantly. One of the reasons that we stopped teaching DARE in the county schools, DARE's a GREAT program, and it was really, really good when it first came out, but DARE didn't change with everything that was going on in the world, basically. You know, just say no and all that kind of stuff, we're going to have to find something else different than that. GREAT, I've heard a lot of good stuff about GREAT, that's gang resistance education and training that is offered, and I'm pretty confident it's a seventh through ninth curriculum. I know it's, I'm pretty sure it starts in the seventh grade. That's really, really, it's a really good program from everybody I've talked to, however, it's also a business, and by that I mean, just like the trouble we were having with DARE, they didn't want DARE officers to wear their sidearm when they taught class. Full-class A uniform, didn't want them to have a gun up there. Well, that don't make much sense to me, you know, I carry one even, even when I don't wear this uniform, but we, Truman Jones said, "If you wanted DARE officers to teach with that one, we're not teaching DARE." And they're very strict, they would send people around to look at the officers and see how they're teaching that class, and if they don't go exactly by the curriculum, then, you know, it could be pulled from that school. How we do it, character education, in our character education and the Do What's Right program, we cater that to whatever. So if Laverne's having a specific problem that's different from something that's going on at Oakland, well, we can switch it around to meet the needs of that particular school. That's why we are constantly developing programs, because we have guys out there that see what's going on, and then they'll come back to us with an idea. We've got some of the best SROs in the nation, and they'll come back, "Well, this is what's going on in our school. Do you care if I start teaching this?" Absolutely not. If it's going to take care of that particular problem at their school, by all means, teach it. But if it's not needed at another school, we shouldn't be handicapped by a set curriculum of a money-making organization just because they want us to teach exactly what they do in the exact order that we do it in. So that's one of the things that we try to do by developing our own programs, which they're all post-certified, meaning they're sent to the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy, and they're certified through the state of Tennessee as a curriculum, and when we teach those to other officers, they get in-service training for listening to us. So we kind of design programs in this county to meet the specific needs of each end of the county that we're on. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Major Kennedy and you also, Captain Hendrickson. I remember when you weren't a captain.
Well, I remember when you wasn't in that chair, too.
You really weren't much of anything.
You're right.
Anyway, it's glad to see you, Kennedy.
Good to see you, buddy.
You know, you didn't always do what you were told, either.
Nope, I didn't. And I think I may be the, I'm going to say this, if we're on record here, I may be the only SRO in the county that sent a principal to the office, but if you want him to tell that story after this meeting, I'm sure he'd be glad to.
I went, I went, came back, he was my SRO. Everybody else got to pick theirs, I wound up with him. But I got the best one out of the deal, and I will tell somebody that story if they want to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Before Major Kennedy gets away, recognize his son won the state wrestling championship. Congratulations, oh, you're a proud dad.
Thank you.
Got another year left, too, doesn't he?
Yeah, he's the first junior ever to win a state championship. Congratulations.
If I could say one more thing, just to let you know, the sheriff, we got a national, another national award. This is our second one, from the School Safety Advocacy Council. We have won the 2010 National Exemplary School Safety Award. Your SRO Division has, and it's, we will be presented with that in July at the School Safety National Conference, and it's a, in collaboration with the United States Department of Justice and Penn State University. So congratulations to all the SROs out there in Rutherford County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no visitors, so that puts us on to number nine, Mr. Gill.
Oakland High School International Baccalaureate in Athletics, and we had a FYI the other night.
No, you're supposed to fill out a blue form and start at the beginning of the, before, it has to be handed in before the meetings start. Well, there's a, there's a, there's a form there. I'd say come on and speak if you want to. You'll have to fill out this form before you leave, though, so Miss Michaels will have a record of it. We don't normally do this, and that's okay.
I don't normally do this either. I'm here to represent my son Tyler, Tyler Wilkins. He's been at, at senior at Eagleville High. And, um, last Sunday, uh, hi- his father was hunting, and he left a couple of turkey hunting knives, I have them to show you if you wanna see them. And when he left them in the truck, the Thursday following, for some reason, the principal felt the need to check Tyler's truck, and along with four or five other students. And they, they didn't find what they were looking for, which, that's not the type of kid Tyler is. But when they went through his truck, they found the two cleaning knives that they had used to clean a turkey with. And, um, Tyler's always been taught to go by rules and regulations. He's a great kid, he's got excellent grades. And, um, he's, he does not deserve to not be able to walk with his class. Uh, I raise my kids in a loving home, and they're, they're not in gangs, they're not in, you know, they've been raised to fish and hunt and ride horses. And, you know, for, for Tyler to have a knife in his truck, it would be considered more of a tool, because, you know, like a wrench, you know, you gotta have one. And during turkey season, when he, his father left, accidentally left the, the knife in his truck, no one thought of it ever to be a weapon. I mean, a knife to my family is more of a tool to clean turkeys, deers, fish, you know, things like that. And, um, Tyler's always been a loving kid. I received letters from teachers where he has been appreciated as a student. And if you could just, um, forgive us for my husband's error of leaving the knife in the truck. It was accidental, and Tyler, when they asked him, when we were here last Wednesday, they asked him if he knew the knives were in the truck. Now, honest aide Tyler, of course, said yes, but he could've said no.
Your time is up, thank you, you have three minutes, and that's, it's been three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Um, I was told I could come here and hope to get your forgiveness.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh...
Oakland High School International Baccalaureate in Athletics, uh, there have been a high number of zone exemption applications for student athletes to transfer to Oakland High School for the International Baccalaureate Program. Other high school principals have concerns about it, and I wanted to, the board to be aware of the concern before we proceed with approving the applications, uh, in question. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion about this the other night. And we've, we've done some research over the last forty-eight hours, and, uh... First of all, there's no finger pointing here with respect to Mr. Burlock or any of the coaches at Oakland, but there have been unusually large number of people wanting into the International Baccalaureate Program. That said, Mr. Odom, I did a little research, and James too. Uh, when we started the program two years ago, there was pretty rigid requirements with respect to what they had to take their first two years, right, Don? And I, I think we've gotten away from that a little bit, and what I'd like to do is to go ahead and prove this new wave of applications. However, I want us to take a peek at, uh, kinda studying the protocol for how they get into the school in case there were simply some kids that wanted to go to Oakland and play sports, and didn't have international baccalaureate abilities. And I'm going to recommend that we put a, put a group together to kinda study, one, what our original intent was, secondly, to make sure that kids that actually are enrolling in the IB program, are IB caliber kids, and perhaps even have some kinda criteria, or some kinda cut score for getting in. Otherwise, uh, you, you know, we could have forty, fifty, sixty, seventy kids each and every year wanting to get in, and, uh, may not be that caliber kid. And, uh, I think that's fair for Oakland, I think that's fair for the other high schools, so if the board doesn't have an issue with that, uh, we'll proceed with approving this, this bunch of students that have applied. And over the course of the next month, maybe Mr. Odom will head up a group, and I'll put four or five, uh, folks on that committee, come back to the board with maybe a separate or a different recommendation, or maybe not. Maybe we just do business as usual. But I think everybody is owed that across the county, and I'm gonna recommend that we do that.
Questions, Mr. Hodge?
I'm gonna make a few comments, just, just like I did the other night. Uh, first of all, I'm disappointed with the way this thing was handled, I, I think it's handled in a poor manner. Every time somebody cries something, uh, we never hear anything about it, and then we get an issue like this. Uh, basically, you say what you want to as far as recruiting and all that. Uh, if you're gonna form a committee, I'll just basically say straightforward, I'd be interested in being on this committee. I still go back to, to Oakland as, forget the IB program. Basically, we've had an open enrollment out there, and I still contend that you're gonna sit here and deal with these athletes and non-athletes. I continue going down the wrong road, so that's gonna be about two cents, and, uh, we'll just wait and see what happens.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, Mr. Gill, ten. Okay, uh, ten, Race to the Top application. Let me go back to what I just said before we go to ten. Uh, I presume that I've got the blessing of the board to proceed with what I suggested? Or do we need to take an action on that?
It was for information only, so I, I, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we have to take an action on that unless somebody just wants to. I think he has, if nobody says anything, I think he has the board's blessing to do it. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think we need to investigate it, because right now we've got, I don't know if it goes so far as to call it a mess, but we have a, a situation that needs to be looked at. To me, it's, it's two separate, it's the IB students and then it's other students. I think you need to address both of those. What is our policy toward it? Do we really have an open enrollment at Oakland? And if so, we need to treat athletes and non-athletes the same, I think. And then secondly, on the IB, is it being used as a, as a alternate path to get into Oakland? And if so, what step do we wanna take? So I'm all for you having a committee, I just hope you address both of those two things. I mean, they're related, but ultimately separate.
Anyone else?
The IB program is a more rigorous curriculum. Our magnet schools, our spectrum programs, so it doesn't seem reasonable not to have some qualifications to be involved in those programs. And it, to my knowledge, we, we certainly have, we certainly have that with Spectrum and, and the magnet schools, so, uh, Mr. Odom brought out what was the Explorer Test the other night. You know, that might be a, might be a good measuring stick on, uh, on the capability of, of a student meeting that advanced curriculum, so, uh, I think a committee to study it is, is an excellent idea.
Anyone else? Ten.
Race to the Top application. Rutherford County's four-year allocation of the state's two hundred fifty point five million dollars is three million, six hundred forty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars. By May fourteen, two thousand ten, we must submit a first-year application for at least twenty-five percent of the funds. In developing our RTT, Race to the Top Local Scope of Work, we must identify actions that align with the state plan, as listed in the elements of the State Reform Plan. Uh, and you can see that tab two. After reviewing our Tennessee Comprehensive System Planning Process Document Soliciting Suggestions From Our Schools, we are requesting a first-year allocation of one million, one hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And we recommend that you approve the recommended Race to the Top Local Scope of Work request for two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So move.
Have a second. All in favor, let it be known, say aye. Any discussion first? Second. Oh, I had a second, any discussion?
Okay, I'm sorry.
All in favor, let it be known, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Eleven.
Student Discipline Appeal, uh...
Second motion, yeah.
I thought we did, I thought we did both of them at the same time, but we'll go on back and do that.
Sorry. Uh, also recommend that you authorize Director of Schools and the Chairman of the School Board to authorize a resubmission of any elements of Rutherford County's scope of work, not initially meeting requirements on or before May twenty-seventh, two thousand ten, and authorizes that the Director of Schools to file any necessary budget revisions, addenda, or transfer requests.
Heard the recommendation, have a motion.
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Was this on here the other night?
It was, it was, yeah.
No discussion, all in favor? Motion, let it be known, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, before you do this, number eleven, Mr. Gill, uh, I guess I really made a mistake letting that lady speak, uh, although I'm, I'm not upset that, that she spoke. But I think if Angel had been here, sh- she would've known who she was, and probably would've said that she should not speak at that time. So, uh, but she did get to speak, and that's, you've heard what, what she had to say, and you've also looked at your packets, so. Go ahead, Mr. Gill.
Let, let me, let me clarify what, how about, what the law is with respect to the zero tolerance. Which is why the Disciplinary Hearing Authority ruled, as did the school administration. Uh, if, if somebody knowingly brings a weapon on campus, any narcotic on campus, regardless of, of whether it was left in there over the weekend, we have no choice but to zero-tolerance them pursuant to state statute. Once that's done, that student is expelled from school for one year. However, the superintendent, uh, has the right to modify that zero-tolerance infraction, which is what was done. It was modified to, uh, to the alternative school to finish out the school year. In addition to that, it's in procedure, really pursuant to our graciousness in conjunction with the high school principals, we came up with a procedure that allowed students, for example, if you perpetuate a, a zero tolerance the first semester of your senior year, and you go to the alternative school, you're on your way out, you can participate in graduation. However, if after ten days into the second semester, if a student, uh, commits a zero-tolerance infraction, and they're remanded to the alternative school, they're not allowed pursuant to procedure to participate in graduation. So, that said, school administration had no latitude with respect to what they did. The Disciplinary He- Hearing Board didn't, and from my perspective, even though it's painful to hear those kinda stories, we did exactly, uh, you know, what the law requires of us. And I'll entertain any questions.
The, the young man is going to graduate though, is that correct?
He, he is.
Providing his grades are...
Yes, he is.
And, and I've asked this before, and I just don't think I fully, we have all these options listed on the agenda, but in reality, we don't really, they're not realistic options from a legal standpoint, if I'm correct, I mean, if... Am I right on that, I mean?
We got Jeff here too.
Yeah, Jeff, if you could speak to that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, with regard to zero-tolerance offenses, the legislature to a large extent has taken those decisions away from you, away from the board. Um, you know, before we had zero tolerance, those type of issues would come before the board, and the board would have the discretion to, to rule on particular cases as to what the appropriate punishment would be, and to get into underlying circumstances of particular, um, offenses when they occurred. Um, when the legislature saw fit to, um, create the zero-tolerance law, um, the legislature determined that certain offenses were so egregious and raised, caused such potential harm for the school system, they were going, allow no tolerance for those offenses. That's such as possession of firearms on campuses, possession of knives on campuses, possession of narcotics on campuses. So at that point, um, this zero-tolerance law came to effect, it said exactly what it implies. We offer zero tolerance for these offenses, there's, there's no tolerance for these offenses. So no matter what the circumstances, if someone knowingly possesses a gun on campus, knowingly possesses a, a knife on campus, or narcotics on campus, under the laws that currently stands, the school system is mandated to give them, provide the punishment that Mr. Gill recited. So when the appeal comes before, uh, the board, really, the only, um, issue that the board has to address is whether or not the underlying offense occurred. In this case, was there a knowing possession of, of property, of the, um, offending article on school property? If the school, if the board determines there was, then in that case, you're really limited as to what recourse you can have, because you have a zero-tolerance offense, and you have mandated, um, punishment at that point by the state legislature. And, uh, certainly the superintendent under state law has authority to, to modify that to, um, to the alternative school, but that's really the only option you have. So you really are constrained with respect to what options you have as a board by virtue of the sto- of the zero-tolerance law. And certainly has been said, it does have harsh results at times, there'd be a lot of people would promote it and say, well, it's good that it's there, because it protects schools and makes sure they're safe. So there's alternative arguments you can make both for and against the law, but i- it is what it is now, so it does kinda restrict your, your capabilities in addressing these situations.
I appreciate all that, and I, I just think the way it's presented on the agenda gives people the impression that we have more latitude on this than we really do.
Right.
And, and maybe creates a false hope among some of the families, I don't, I don't...
Maybe we should check into that and change the wording of that some way or another, that might be a good thing to, to do.
Right.
Thank you, thanks. What's the pleasure of the board? Well, yeah, I guess you better.
Student Discipline Appeal, the board has been requested review the Thursday, April twenty-second, two thousand ten decision of the Disciplinary Hearing Authority. To uphold expulsion of a student from Eagleville High School, the student was expelled for one calendar year under the board's zero-tolerance policy for possessing a weapon on school property. This review is pursuant to provisions of Policy six point three one seven. Policy states that the board shall review the record and shall, one, affirm the decision of the DHA, overturn the decision of the DHA, modify the decision of the DHA to a lesser penalty, uh, except in cases of zero-tolerance violation, that, that may be the key word there. Obviously, there's some you could grant a second hearing, which will be before the board, or deny a request for a board hearing.
You've heard the recommendation, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman? Based on the information we have, it falls on number three here, that modification. But, uh, I don't see how we can modify it, and we even had testimony, or not testimony, but a statement from the mother that, that didn't deny any, 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 uh, presence of, of the knives. And as much as I'd like to see him be able to walk, we just don't have it, because it does not, the law does not allow us to, to, uh, to modify it in this particular case. So, uh, I, I would, um...
Making the motion?
Affirm the decision.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. General discussion of the board, Mr. Jurney?
Thank you. All of these things that we have just presented are covered in the student guide, our book, that goes home with these students every year, signed by parents. It behooves parents and children to know what's in the guidelines. They know, that they truly know that they can't, not supposed to do this. Sometimes we don't think, but we pay the re- we pay the consequence of our failure to think and carry out like we should.
Thank you, Mr. Jurney, and any other discussion, Mr. Blair?
With all the flooding, uh, that we've had in this county, uh, probably the northern end of the county uh, experienced a little more, uh, difficulty than, than the county in its entirety. And, Mr. Gill, I know you took probably some flak for the, your last call, but, but, uh, there were, in the Laverne, Smyrna, and, uh, in the Sulphur Springs area, there were a lot of roads still underwater, and a lot of dangerous areas, so, uh, you know, good call, and, and thank you for doing that, and, and I hope that we had a plan in place that in case that system hit... And, and I hope that we had a plan in place that in case that system had settled over us, rather than Davidson County, that we would have been able to enact some of our campuses as shelters, because they certainly would have been needed if, if it had moved a little more southeast.
Actually, it did settle over us on Saturday, we just didn't get it Sunday, which was a good thing.
Well, that's what I meant, I'm sorry, you're right, yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate your kind words, Mr. Blair, but I would, I would just say that my world is filled with flak. And anyway, I, I do want to say this, I want to commend the bus drivers. You know, they got out there and, and, and kind of scattered their routes and knew where to go, where not to go and et cetera. And, and our average daily attendance on that first day back was almost ninety-seven percent, which is pretty remarkable, because there were some roads that were still underwater, particularly like you said at Lynn, I know, I think Buckeye Bottom had six foot of water on it and Allen Road, but we, we, we rode them and bus drivers got them there. So, good job of the bus drivers.
Pretty hardy bunch.
Yeah.
I do appreciate everyone's efforts during this time and I, I was very pleased to, when I talked with Mr. Clardy the other night, his report on the schools and how they fared through this, and I, I was just delighted to hear that report, that we, we had very little physical damage to our building, water problems inside. It was, was just a very small number compared to what the potential was for those, those situations. So, I'm very proud of that fact, principals and maintenance people set those things up.
Very great. Any other comments? All minds at ease, meeting adjourned.